Okay, call the order. Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Annette?
Yep.
Dustin?
Yep.
Ashley?
Yep.
Gail?
Yep.
I need to approve the consent agenda.
All motion.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those? Public works report.
And first?
You, but yeah.
Alright, well, water plant. Uh, monthly reports done, bacteria and fluorites tomorrow. Water leak, we had a water leak at the old café. It was plowing snow at one point. Had to event the riser. Must've turned it a little bit. So, that's fixed and shut back off. Uh, arsenic samples done. Tier two reports done. I'm still waiting on the CCR report, the DNR sends me that. We gotta post it and send it all over. Then that'll be done. Um, I'm still waiting on rural water to come and test the raw flow from the wells. The generator, I had it, well, last Wednesday, it ran for thirteen hours, did great. Well, I kept getting alarms every time the electricity blinked. So, I was already out in the plow and I can't do this, so started the generator. It ran until I went home.
Good.
But it ran great, kept up with everything. No more alarms, just to go push reset, cause all that happened was electricity blinked. Uh, wastewater, monthly reports done. We once saw the ice thawed. We have an air leak in cell two. It's right, I'm hoping, right next to the bank, not very deep. I talked to Pimble. That's something we'll have to get a hold of DNR, drain it so far. You can only drain it till it turns dark, then you cannot drain anymore. Then it's pump it from this cell to that cell. I'm hoping it's not very deep and we can just cut the line and fix it.
How do you, how do you know there's a leak there?
Cause there's aerators out in there?
Yeah.
And it's supposed to bubble out there and not bubble here. It's bubbling right next to the bank, it's got the liner even bubbled up. I have it shut off, I have that, those aerators shut off. It's, I'm hoping it's right there, not just coming up the bank from somewhere deeper. So that something will get fixed here soon. Uh, UV lights and we switching seggers, they get switched on the fifteenth. The UV lights get put back in, which we gotta go through them all and we got all the replacements last year. Streets, our third winter went alright. Um, Marcus didn't show up again. He did this last year during the biggest storm. Last year I offered him to stay at my house. This year I told him, use your own judgment, just get here. If you need to, if you get here at midnight, sit in the shop till I get here. Just go to sleep, whatever. So, I don't know, city wanna buy a cot to put down there? I mean, it's a little ridiculous. If it happens again, I don't have the authority, but I'm telling him to stay home for three days without pay. That's one of the first questions you're asked at your interview. Can you get here in the winter, are you okay to stay at the shop?
Yeah.
It's too much for one. You plan better when you know it's just you. I was out at ten thirty with alarms, home, texted him, I didn't call. Hey, it's getting bad out. Midnight he called, I can't make it. That's when I went out. Well, I got up, made coffee, I was down at the shop at one. And I was here till two, no, I was here till four, he got, finally got here at two. I made him stay, you're here, you have to get your eight hours. So, he stayed till ten. It's ridiculous. That's one of the first questions you're asked at your interview. We found a sinkhole on Eagle. We thought it was the sewer, sewer was backed up, I'm surprised no one called. Well, we got it cleared, had cameras here today, it's not collapsed. I don't, I don't know what, besides tree roots, it really looked good. And I had him cut the roots out while they were here, so. I'm not sure why that sinkhole showed up. Our water levels, our pumpage from the water plant's not, cause their neighbor's water line goes right through there too. But pumpage isn't up, I put my little listening device on it today and couldn't hear anything. I don't know what's going on. We cut a hole in the asphalt, you can't, it's not hollow under there. So, I'm not sure, we might, I might just have Pimble cut it, we'll fill it with rock, see what happens from there. I don't know why, oh, maybe a bunch of moisture from the thaw and rain, but I really thought it was the sewer collapsed. Right in line with the sewer, the manhole, right in the middle of the street. But it's not busted, it's not collapsed, nothing, so.
I see you digging at that hole a little bit, find anything?
No. Can you push our push rod? And then I went over in this, well, I was like, maybe it's just frost. I pushed that five foot push rod clear to the handle, all over in people's yards down there, so it's not frost. It's hard. It's all, well, it's full of sand, so.
What runs over the top of, of that sanitary sewer?
What do you mean?
In that area, are the?
Nothing.
You said the water?
Our water, well, just service lines?
Yeah.
Would be over top of it, cause it's pretty deep.
Okay.
The water mains on this side of Eagle, so the service lines to those houses.
I was, I was, as I was walking and the dog, I thought, you know, we just had this major problem about a half a block north of there.
Eagle Street's bad, I get called there a lot.
Yeah, and I was just wondering.
It's tree roots, that's what it is, it's a street.
I was wondering if, if potentially an increased flow because of fixing that problem a half a block north might have.
Well, they go to Chicago and then go over to Kendrick.
Oh.
And down, like, this starts and goes north to Ken, or Chicago. That end comes to, Chicago's a main for a lot of this north end of town.
Oh, I didn't know that.
There's no sewer in Madison Street. There's sewer, wastewater and state, but yeah, they go and then down through the football field.
Okay, okay, yeah, then it, then it can't be the one north?
It start, they, yeah, they all go.
The one north of there then couldn't have affected it at all?
Cause it goes and then turns and goes right to Kendrick. Uh, sweeper, we had it out, got it cleaned up. My new broom should be here anytime, so it's completely ready, ready to go as soon as my new broom gets here. Uh, I should have two mower bids from Kubota in Des Moines. It's the same mower as we have, but one's different horsepower compared to the other. They're both four wheel drive, six foot decks, which we need that to mow the sewer plant. Anyone of you can come jump on my zero turn lawn mower and go out there and try and mow those slopes on it. It ain't gonna happen. It doesn't even like the viaduct. So, I'm not even looking at zero turns. But I should have two same mower, but different, one's a little smaller than. I don't really care on horsepower, six foot deck, I want a six foot deck. That's all I really want, and four wheel drive.
And when will both be in, do you know?
I'm hoping I'll have them this, this month, which I'll bring them next month.
And when you talk to them, make, make sure that they understand that this is
Yes.
money that we have for July. And if, you know, if we can pick it up in June and then pay them in July, that would be great.
I've talked to them, yes. Um, I talked to Tyler Mear, he's supposed to be back this month, finish us up, so. Other than that, that's all I got, parks aren't open yet, so.
What do we got left for trees?
Really a lot, just in the parks.
Just in the park?
Yeah. He's got a few bigger trees on the streets where he needs a line to drop the street light wire or whatever, but he's about all done, besides stones.
Do you know a lot about this comprehensive solid waste management plan update thing that we have on our agenda for later?
For what?
The last thing that we have on our agenda today.
This is, I don't know, from twenty twenty?
Oh, this is your resolution, you guys all do it?
I know, but they have to update it.
This isn't me or DNR, so, this is the city council.
It's like, it's you. It's just awesome.
Maybe, I might've been here in twenty twenty for something like this, but, yeah.
Okay.
It probably does need updated. What's this?
That's working with it.
Renewal every three to five years, yeah.
It'd be five years.
Yeah, cause our, well, our wastewater permit's supposed to be renewed every three to five years, but I still haven't got our new permit for our new plant. We're still on our old permit, actually, from DNR. They don't get no hurry.
Okay, thanks, Karen.
Okay, library board.
We have a new, are updating our budget, so that the will, what you guys give us in the will money is less. The copier lease is for if our color copier would break. Right now, we only pay thirteen hundred a year for our copier lease, so the twenty four hundred is for black and white one would fail. So, will money, we've never used that in the seven years I've been here. Um, so we put that to cover us just in case, cause certain mine items, we never use that, but it's worst case scenario, we have to budget for it. Um, and right now, we've used forty eight percent of our budget, so we're on track to be under budget for the year.
So, I did go to their meeting and touched on a little bit, um, like she was saying, you know, like tech expense. She puts that down in case, you know, if a computer were to go down, she has to put that money in there in case she has to replace a computer, or she has to have somebody come over and fix it, but it's just like when we do our budgets. It's just in there for just in case.
Cause our computers are fairly new, so.
Right.
But.
So, like they have explained to me, that money is just in there as a, in case they need it. It also doesn't take into account, um, every year, they usually get money from New Way to pay for summer reading and other people donate money. That doesn't, it's not taken into account in this, because they can't guarantee that money every year.
Usually, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, usually if we need something like our computers we got when Wendy was here, we got with grant money. And then we're wanting new furniture for the library, but we applied for a grant to use that, so we have it there, but we're always gonna look for a grant first, we don't want to use our own money. And last year, we spent forty seven thousand was what we actually spent, even though we budgeted for more, we never spent what we budgeted. It's just worst case scenario.
Right, well, like I was telling Tammy, I said, for me personally, that twenty one thousand is what it was, but what is it now, twenty three thousand, twenty something thousand?
It's at the very, very bottom.
They put in there for the library will money, the twenty three thousand. I said, for me personally, that's a very scary number, just because I know how much you have in the will money. And they put that in there just so that they're covered in case.
We use it to balance our budget, but during the seven years I've been on the board, we've never used it.
Right.
Decap has mini grants, decolorization, so I know, um, Tane has, and Jefferson has, Jefferson Library. Decap mini grants. Programs about.
I don't wanna sound bad here, but, um, it shows us as, as the city of Scranton contributing eight thousand seven hundred dollars. And that's cash that, that we broke up three different ways, is that correct? And the library's portion was eight thousand seven hundred. Are there other things that the city pays for that doesn't go through the library's budget?
Yes, we pay for like their
Water.
Water, their grass. But it would just be like any other city building.
Be another one? Okay.
Isn't that what we do for every other city building, though?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just looking at, at, uh, city of Scranton, eight thousand seven hundred, but the lost funds uh, it's also comes from, through us, so that's another fifteen thousand.
It is, but it's not something that we need to like take out of our budget per se.
No, no.
Lost funds are takes.
But I, I, you know, Green County, Green County gives twelve thousand and shows the city of Scranton at eight thousand seven hundred.
Right.
It's actually more than that.
It's actually backwards too, cause the city's supposed to get, technically supposed to get more than the county and other. Green County is funny that way, right?
Yeah.
Compared to the library.
Cities are supposed to fund a, a larger portion of the library than what the county gives.
But Green County is like an accept, it's, Green County's different in that regard.
Green County has been typically backwards, where Green County libraries, their cities usually donate less than what the counties give. Counties typically give more.
I know the county, there was an asking of, I think an eight percent increase for libraries, Green County libraries, um, but I, if I remember right, I think it's only gonna be a four percent instead of eight percent. So, whatever the asking was from the county changed your eight percent increase down to four percent.
Right, but the other thing is that this is just what we gave them last year, the same amount. The price of everything, even when we did our budget, is going up. I mean, the electrical's going up, the gas is going up, everything is going up. So, I know that, that we were talking about the fact that, that they were depending a lot on the will money. But the thing is, when I have talked to them, they're not spending the will money, the way that I was afraid that they were. So, I would not be opposed with going back and giving them more money, just because stuff is gonna be more expensive, and if they're not actually spending the will money, they're gonna have to be cutting back on the stuff they're already offering because we're not giving them an increase, but we're giving pretty much everybody else an increase. We've increased the water, the
And so, our librarian Tammy had originally on original buys, I asked for eight hundred dollars more. Which eight hundred dollars to our library is huge, like, the amount of stuff she can do with eight hundred dollars is a lot of money. Cause we try to do a lot of programming for the kids and that costs more, like, the food costs more, the craft supplies costs more, everything costs more. And the library is the one place in town where it's open to everybody, it's free, it doesn't cost you anything, and I think our city without that would be, what else would we have?
And she's been having a lot of kids at her programs.
And to have speakers come in and talk, it's like anywhere from like two to five hundred dollars to have a speaker come in and give a program, it's hundreds of dollars for those things, which we want to provide, we want the community to come in and have those available to them, but it, everything costs money.
Right, so, when we were doing the budget, I was just afraid, when we were going over their budget, I was just afraid that they were going to spend all of their will money in like six year at this rate. But if they're not actually spending that money, I think them asking for the eight hundred dollars is not really that much money to ask with the price of increase of everything. And like she said, she's, she also put in their little pamphlets, I don't know what you call them, blurbs, in the water department. She's asking for people to sponsor programs for like twenty or twenty five dollars a program on Wednesdays. And I don't know how many, I think there was like twenty kids that attend those every Monday. And if it's bingo, there's thirty some people that show up to those. And I think out of every department that we have under the city, this is probably the smallest asking one that we have.
And we don't have the approval of
No, we don't.
The library on the, on the agenda?
No.
No.
No, no.
We're just talking.
Just something to think about was all of this.
Okay, okay, thanks, that was, you explained a lot.
Well, I was very confused, and it took a while to go over it last night, we were there for a couple hours just trying to figure it out, so.
Was I.
Okay, community center.
Okay. Um, community little activities, um, did have a land auction here last month. Um, we had a tournament, there was a tournament that was postponed in February that, um, got rescheduled for March first cause we had a blizzard on a Saturday morning. That was supposed to just be an advisory, but that was fun anyway. Um, so we had a few weather cancellations in, um, February, and we have a few more in March. But, um, we do have a fundraiser coming up in the month. Um, we're gonna bring back the soup supper that the Berman used to do, have a soup supper. And we're also gonna have bingo that night, and there will be dodgeball, so you can come do all three, you can come just eat, you can come just to play bingo, or you can send your kids to dodgeball, whatever, it's a, it's whatever you wanna do, you can participate in. Um, the, the meal is a free will donation, bingo will be a dollar card, and then dodgeball's three, three dollars for dodgeball. Um, we did have dodgeball night, uh, Saturday night, had a pretty good crowd. A lot of people that I did not know, new faces that I had never seen before, um, so that's good. I was looking through their waivers and some of them are Scranton people that I've never seen in town before, so, guess I need to get out more. But yeah, so that was a good night, um, a lot of new people. Um, we did get the grant submitted for Grow Green for the gym roof, um, and I'm sure you've got invitations to attend that night, cause you'll be receiving your municipality funds. And, um, the gym roof, um, will be a recipient as well. Um, I have not heard on the community foundation, uh, grant, we applied for, for some renovations on second floor, so I haven't heard on that one yet. If we're getting a Dear John letter or come join us for the awards, so I'm not sure. We're still, the generator, we're just waiting for a line to come, finish looking it up. Run the new service over. Your guess is good of mine, I don't know, I mean, we're just, they're, they're slow. It took Crystal and I to call a line, I don't know how many times, just for a street light.
None of that bitching.
So, um, yeah, anyway, um, so I hope you do attend the Grow Green Awards on April first.
I'll call you later, Doyle.
Yeah, anyway, and then we're gonna plan the yard, we always do a spring cleanup around the grounds too, we'll be, we'll be working on planning on that, but turnout, we're working on finishing up our uh, fundraiser night. So, hope that everybody can join us and hope you have a good turnout, and there's no late spring blizzard. Do you have any questions?
What night was the dodgeball and the bingo and the soup supper?
Twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
And to keep track of kids who've paid for, or anybody who's paid for dodgeball, we're gonna put a wristband on them, so, since people will kinda be going back and forth, so then, you know, if they're out on the floor playing, they, they've paid, they'll have a wristband, so to kinda help monitor that a little, a little bit.
Make a bunch of kids pay twice.
There's a gentleman today down here, was he on the roof looking out, things over?
Oh, there was somebody at the roof?
Well, he's dark picked up on story counting plates.
Oh, I don't know, cause they were supposed to call if they were, but.
He was, I figured he's up there, I'm looking through.
I don't know how he got up there. Cause he had to get in the building.
I don't know how he got up there, I just but he had a ladder hooked up to, on top of his truck and sitting, hanging there, waiting, and didn't see him around, I thought he must be up on the roof.
Well, he'd had to get in to get up there, so, I don't know, I never got a call.
I don't know, I thought maybe he's just up checking.
I know they were gonna come relook at some stuff. Because we're gonna put a new roof hatch in, and we're gonna put a new ladder to the roof. Thank God, that's scary.
Very scary.
Yeah. I wouldn't wanna climb that ladder.
I'll just take your word for it.
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna put up a new ladder.
Yeah.
And we're gonna add, which wasn't in the bid, but we're just gonna, alumni's just gonna go ahead and or pay for that stuff, just goes while we're doing it, it needs done.
Definitely.
Just for safety reasons, it needs done, yeah. Cause I think it's the original ladder from, I thought it was built.
It's only about that far from the wall.
Yeah, you can't get your feet, can't hardly get your feet on, in there, like you're on your toes going up the ladder, it's, yeah. We're gonna try to build more of a, a, an angled ladder with a platform, so when you get up there, you can actually have a platform to stand on to raise the roof latch, and it will be on, like, spring loaded, so that you're not looking, the one now Roof latch and it will be on like spring loaded, so that you're not lifting, the one now, you have to lift it up, it's like a box. You have to lift it up off and over and then while you're standing on the ladder and then lift it back up and latch it. It's not a very good design. Yeah.
That's creepy.
Yeah, it is.
Thanks, Don.
Yep.
Parks Committee. Okay. New business. Renew the CD. Six months is four point two five percent. Nine months is four point two oh percent. Twelve months is four point oh five percent. So the best rate is six percent, six months.
What are the odds we're gonna, gonna have to dip into this?
I hope we don't have to.
Have we, in your time here?
Six months goes by pretty fast.
I'd go for the six months. That's my.
Six months has the best.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for the six months.
My second.
Okay, oh. Who, Dustin?
Yep.
Annette?
Yeah.
Gail?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yep.
Highway twenty-five donation, five thousand dollars. It made, it made a lot of, it helped a lot of people out last year. So, and it's going, I mean, it's staying in the community and.
I think it's fabulous, I'd make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Second by Gail? Okay, Gail?
Yes.
Annette?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yep.
Ashley?
Yes.
Jerry, can I just add to that, we will this year have um, some funds for Scranton. For demolition, so if there are property owners that need some demolition work, we will be able. They'll have to fill applications, but we'll be able to help fund some demolition this year.
There's some I'd like to demo.
Yeah, so.
Right.
So, like if you happen to know property owners or something like, if you could just put that word a little bit. We would be able to help with some tear down and.
Like if somebody had a garage or something.
Yeah, or if there's a house that's owned by somebody that is in really bad shape, we could help. We would have some funds to help with that demolition.
Awesome.
That'd be great.
Yeah, green spaces better than.
Some of these places.
Okay. Pulling off Community Center Board Member Travis Warren. He's not made many, many, very many meetings and. We need everybody there to help out and.
This is the one that you were talking about that you tried to contact and.
Yeah.
Did he find me email and say he wasn't in the community doing that anymore?
Well, yeah, he, his. So. We scheduled a meeting that he could be there at and then he messaged and he says, do I still have to come till I have a replacement or?
And then he didn't show up.
Then he didn't show up.
And we made it for a day that he said, oh, oh, I can be there for that one.
And then he obviously doesn't want on it, so I'll make a motion that. All second.
Now this, is this approving the ordinance?
No, it's taken off.
This is removing a board member.
Removing a board member, okay.
Okay, Dustin?
Yeah, do we have a second?
I did, okay.
Ashley?
Yes.
Gail, Ashley?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, discussion about allowing another alumni member to be on the Community Center Board. That way, we'd have to put two people on, right, with, replace Travis.
No, it's a seven, it's a seven member board and so a while back, um. When we wanted to start this twenty-eight E agreement, one of the, then there was one representative for the alumni, so we switched one of the seven members to be an alumni member.
Oh.
Yeah, so, so now we have, we have people representing the city. And we have someone representing Alumni Association and the other are community members, rural and town. Um, so we just made a suggestion, um. We do have, we have council person and we have the mayor on our board, I mean, we had two alumni representatives and then the rest were community members. Three community members. Or my other question is, this is an attorney question. With there being a twenty-eight E, does there need to be an ordinance for a board or should that still be in place? I don't know, I'm just asking them questions.
I mean, the current ordinance, I think it just references, I guess it's right here, it just references the one alumni member.
Yep.
And it doesn't seem to. I guess I kinda read that as saying that at least one needs to be an alumni member, but not that there can't be more than that. But if we want.
That's the way I read it too.
Oh, okay.
Cause that it couldn't, that it has to have one.
We wanna make sure we're not.
Yeah, minimum requirement.
Putting people on that isn't okay with how it's written.
Oh, right, I think.
That's what the discussion is about today.
I think that if you wanted to run the resolution then.
So the discussion is how you guys want it wrote, brought, wrote up.
Right, are you wanting to change it, the resolution to say that you want to have two? Or you're just asking?
I guess I thought it was, I thought it was, the way it was written was for one alumni member, but. If he's reading it as.
Yeah, I, I just interpret that as a minimum requirement, I think, I think a lot of.
Maybe we don't.
Yeah, if it's silent or everything else.
I wouldn't change, I.
If we don't have to change anything.
I, I read it the same.
You're, you're gonna save some publication costs if we don't have to change anything.
I read it the same and if you wanted to put another alumni on there. Then I don't think that there would be a problem putting another alumni on there. If that's, I mean, if that's what you wanted.
On a seven member board, I mean, you can't increase the number of.
Yeah, we're not increasing the number of members.
Right, we'll be replacing the one that we removed.
Replacing this.
Like you're already down.
A community member with an alumni member.
Right, cause they're already down one now, cause Travis isn't on there.
Yeah, well, I read it the same way.
Okay, okay. We just wanna make sure that every, everybody's okay and on the same page.
You're remaining six members, one of which shall be a member. Of the Alumni Association.
Normally when it's, I guess, maybe it's just poor drafting or something like that, but a lot of times when it's like this, each and every seat is reserved for someone, it'll explicitly say what the other seats are. And so it doesn't say anything about the other six, so I guess that was kinda what I was thinking.
Yes.
Okay, it's just a minimum.
Yeah, that's my, my look at.
And it could be something when we, now that we're updating the ordinances, maybe we do clarify that and say. How many members should be from the community, how many should be from the city, you know?
The other reason they see it that way too is that it says that. One of them is the mayor. Or a member of the city council and you have the mayor and the city council.
So could, should it say and, and or, or, or should it?
Which is why I'm thinking if you have two alumni and you have the mayor and. Uh, it would be the same kind of thing. I think it would be fine.
What was our last attorney that drew that up?
Yeah, I'm done.
Yeah. I think it would be fine.
Okay, alright.
I mean, if you don't want to have another alumni, if you have somebody else in mind, now it would be fine.
Right, yeah, so before we, we, we didn't want to go out and, we wanted to be careful how we ask people until we knew exactly.
Who we could ask.
Right, well, and especially. Especially if you have somebody that's like, yeah, hey, I wanna be on it, then you're like, yes, yes, please.
And I, and that's the problem with a lot of the boards of small communities.
A lot of times.
You want the people who want to be on there, who want to be involved and rather than be in the situation we've just been in. And somebody's just appointed there, but. We just will have a six member board.
Right.
If the seventh person doesn't go do anything, so, okay. Alright, let me clarify that.
I appreciate you asking that. That's easy peasy.
Yeah.
That's taken care of. Fishing Day.
Yeah, it's super bright, isn't it?
Yeah, say boy, woke me up.
Not my sunglasses?
Yeah.
Pink?
Dad wouldn't allow me to do pink.
Oh.
That's not pink, okay.
That is super pink. So, this is Fishing Day's flyers. You guys wanna copy? It's really pink.
I think it'll get some people's attention.
That'll grab them.
Super pink, come on.
I've done the most lighter pink, but. Super pink. So, I didn't see June sixth, it's free fishing weekend, um.
Is it the same weekend as Bell Tower again?
It is not the same weekend as Bell Tower.
Bell Tower's the weekend after.
Yep, um, but last year we did it at night and we had amazing turnout, so. We're gonna try it again and so it's on a Friday night. Um, I'm hoping the same speakers come and Green County has a new. It's not a conservationist, he's a.
Oh, uh, environmentalist.
Or naturalist?
Naturalist.
Yes.
And he is amazing. Um, he's come to the library a couple times and he is fun to listen to, loves beer on kids. So, he has already volunteered to come talk and sent me tons of emails and is super excited to be there, so. Um, I think they are also doing a couple programs at the library before as well, so. Just kinda need your guys' permission to have Fishing Day, so I can start spamming everybody with my pretty pink.
Pink.
Handouts and hopefully have bright pink shirts for everybody to wear and. It'd be so exciting.
I'll make the motion.
All second.
Okay. Gail?
Yes.
Ashley?
Um, I'll abstain from voting.
Okay.
Yep.
Dustin, Annette?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're getting pink.
What did you do to her Lisa?
I'm hoping you would approve.
We approve all but the color.
I called her and I said, so pink this year and she goes, I knew it.
Okay, approve the spring cleanup, April fifth. At six AM to seven thirty AM.
The reason they shortened it a half hour is cause he says they send to stand around usually about a half hour to forty-five minutes.
Yeah, the last half hour, forty-five minutes, it's nobody shows up. If they do show up, it's always at the last second, so.
I'm okay with that.
You having curbside pickup for people as well?
We always do.
We always do. Just making sure, just not you though.
I mean, you have to get up back. Also I can't.
Go ahead.
Okay. Ashley?
Yep.
Dustin?
Yep.
Annette?
Yep.
Gail?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, it's Resolution twenty, twenty oh seven, approving the comprehensive solid waste management plan update eight.
Cause I read it, I had no idea what it's about.
I don't either. It was sent to the mail saying. Passed it in twenty twenty. Or adopted it in twenty twenty.
Cole was the mayor and Linda was uh, city clerk back then.
Do you know anything about it? In your day? Have you heard anything about it?
Who, who sent it, like, who's it from?
H L W Engineering Group.
Is that who did your wastewater treatment facility?
I'm not a, I couldn't, I need a jet in the mountain.
It sounds like it's just.
Garbage like. Boot candy landfill.
To adopt a comprehensive solid waste reduction.
Oh, is this, is this to use the landfill?
Yeah, it's got.
I'm gonna ask you Chad.
Cause solid.
Yeah, he's, he's like, I have no idea what you're talking about. You probably just had wa, the waste part, do you think? Probably.
Who's all in this central Iowa solid waste?
Is it to make sure you're designated to a.
It's just out of Boone.
To a landfill.
Is this approving to be designated with a landfill or?
It's got, yeah, it's got Boone in there.
Is that what, how's?
When this needs passed by?
Yeah.
I think ju.
March or April.
Well, Jefferson, they take their garbage down to Dallas County.
Table it and look into it further.
You have the option to ask questions.
Go to Dallas County?
Yeah, where the, every town in Green County except Jefferson goes.
There's a landfill, just a hop, skip and a jump on the other side of the Green County line in Dallas County that Jefferson goes to.
Yeah.
Everybody's designated to a specific landfill.
So, we couldn't have our garbage.
If you take something to the Carol landfill, you better tell them you're from Carol, they do tell them you're from Scranton, they'll kick you out.
We, we couldn't do that then, we have to be.
Well, I was told also that even if we wanted to switch service, garbage services, there's a lot of garbage services around that will not deal with Boone County landfill. So, I don't know.
And I, we, we've been told that it's nearly impossible to get out of your contract with Boone.
Do you have, but we can table it, it's, no, we haven't told you.
Oh, I would, I would.
Table it.
Table it.
There's some information to contact.
To figure out what it's all about.
I get more clarification on if you're getting yourself into something that you might not want to.
Absolutely, I don't even know what our, our alternatives are, really.
We could go to Carol.
Well, I don't know if our. Our garbage people deal with anybody but Boone.
No, they, well, they go other landfills.
Do they?
Yeah. Actually, if he, if he could, if, I mean, there's big, you know, if he could take, have him take the Carol, he'd take seventy-one back down where he home base. Be a lot closer than going all the way to Boone and.
Well, maybe it would get us a cheaper rate, you never know.
There's no such thing as cheap.
Or, I said cheaper, not cheap.
Probably the cheapest way is right now.
Maybe, put together.
Yeah, that's what we need to do.
Okay.
Yeah, I would ask them about it.
You guys have any specific questions?
I'd like to know what in the world it is.
Find out if you could switch landfills somehow.
What the different costs are, as opposed to different landfills and.
Well, and maybe talk to the garbage guy too. To see if he would be willing to switch to a different, I mean.
Well, I ain't allowed to go to Carol.
See if we are already stuck under contract with Boone, I don't know. Are we under a, some sort of a ten year contract, five year, I don't know, we don't know what kind of a, I don't deal with. Garbage, garbage, don't people?
All I know is.
I don't know if it's like a DNR, it's a designated where you're supposed to go or what, I don't know, I don't know how they does.
I don't either.
Yeah.
I know somebody who probably does.
Let's, uh, I would suggest we table it until April and then let's have the information that we need on alternatives and what the cost is both ways, also Matt's gotta let us know, you know, can we get a break? If you only carry it to Carol instead of having to go clear to Boone? And, uh, then let's put it on the agenda for, for next month.
Uh, maybe we can discuss his, um, recycling.
Oh, let's figure this out and then I'm gonna get a new contract from him, cuz I haven't gotten a new contract from him since I've been here. That's what I was suggested to do.
That would be amazing.
So, yeah, if you're not gonna take recycling, we shouldn't have to pay for recycling.
Right.
I would advise that you should obtain a copy of this plan before saying that you have directed the preparation of that plan and participated in it since dated the thirty-first of March twenty twenty-five, so. It'd be nice to have that version included with the council packet before you vote on accepting the plan.
Great idea.
Okay.
And then we can see kinda what it does there.
Yeah.
And it might be something that's followed with the state, but we wanna make sure that that's included in the packet.
Got it.
Great idea.
Okay.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Is there an open forum today?
Oh.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Did we formally table that?
What you got, Lisa?
I'm just worried if they, um, have come up about the recycling, if we talk to them about it and if, and if so, these years back that we have been paying for recycle and not, um, can be picked up, but yet we've been paying for it out of the city, we should be getting a refund back from him. I know he probably isn't gonna wanna do it, but all these years we paid for it and he hasn't provided the, and hasn't agreed with his contract to pick it up. So I think they should reimburse back to the city for the recycle situation. And I have a suggestion, you could put all that money back into the pond park, of course. Sorry, I'm gonna dig it forever, so. But I think that only makes sense that, you know, if we pay for it, we should get it back. You know, if you overpay on a bill, they send you money back from it.
I'd like to see recycling be put on our agenda for next month because we need to know the answers to this. I've got it written down here and I had it from last month and so we need to get it on the agenda so that we can talk about it because I don't even know where the money's going.
Into the general account.
General account.
General account, but do we pay it to him?
Yeah, a little bit. We get a little bit of, out of what we do for garbage.
Yeah.
I think he should be invited to attend.
Well, I would like.
Well, and I'd like to add to the recycling, so now, so Green County Recycling, when it goes through Genesis, that, that all is resolved. Now, the city of Jefferson spearheads the recycling and then there's twenty-eight E agreements for towns to participate in recycling. Scranton does not because of, it's supposedly with your.
Grant cash.
Contract. Grand Junction doesn't either, but the county, we have a twenty-eight E with the city, so the big box down there, that is the county and that is designated for the rural part portion of this area. However, we are taking residents in town, so you're collecting money, we're paying for your recycling.
Well, that was suggested too, that if we do get rid of that, we feel we need to.
Well, and.
Talk to the county about that.
And we have kinda discussed that a little bit, that we are okay with leaving it there if the city wants to just.
We'd like to put another container, we'd like to put another container hooked up with Jefferson.
Yeah, some, or you can hook up directly with Jefferson and they'll do your.
They'll just hot dump both containers.
It's always full.
Yeah.
So who do you talk to, to get on that twenty-eight E agreement?
With the city of Jefferson?
Mm-hmm.
You would just, um, Scott Peterson, the city administrator, could help you with that.
But you gotta talk to the.
I was just gonna.
Recycling Committee.
Yeah, which he would, that's him.
Yeah.
He's on.
If you talked to Scott Peterson, I was just gonna give him a call and find out, hey, what's the price of it?
Yeah, he.
Just so that we would, I would have some information to say, hey, in case this is an avenue we wanted to go down for our next meeting.
He told me to talk to Dave.
Dave who?
Dave, uh, he's the city.
Marlin.
Marlin, he's on the city, head of the city boys, uh, Dave Marlin. I was supposed to talk to him, I can't catch him.
Wait a second.
We'll just.
The county's doing this and they're not coming after us.
No, it's free. But we will, but we will.
Yeah.
But we're going to.
Okay. Okay.
We're going to.
Yeah.
Are you gonna say?
We're gonna go to Grand Junction too because we're not gonna.
We got a cash cow going here.
Fair, I didn't know that that was for the rural, until I started working here.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Yeah, and so if, if there's not, we're, we'll move it.
Yeah.
Is what we're gonna end up doing.
Okay.
We'll move it, we'll put it in a different location, it'll probably be out, out county share or something.
We personally would miss it.
Yeah, well, so, cuz we know it's always full because.
Who are we supposed to be using, Gail?
I know.
Well, it's, and, and I told him that that's why is because the city residents aren't getting the service that they're paying for.
Right.
So it's coming into our, and so then we're, yeah.
One of the reasons why he quit picking out recycling is people quit putting it out there.
Uh, you watch him, he would just throw it right in the.
That's why they're not putting it out there, why waste your time rinsing it out, smushing it in, whatever.
When he's gonna throw it all on the same truck.
He's resident in the garbage, in the back of the garbage truck.
If you put another one out there, building, painting, recycling, you can put another one out there. Because that one's always full, so that if you had to and pay the county and pay him both.
But no, it's just.
We have the other one that's down there, but it's padlocked.
That's theirs, that's the one whoever used to do our.
Another reason why we have had it for years.
Pick up recycling and then he'd go do garbage.
But we've had that for years.
We have asked them to get rid of it for years.
So, give them a rent notice on it.
I think that we should charge them a storage fee for the back that we. And our storage fee is.
You pay a bill, you overpay the bill and they don't cover, you get a refund back. We have plenty enough evidence that they're not doing that contract.
Yeah, we can beat this, this horse to death, it's gotta be on our agenda and we need to have.
There is a lot of towns are quitting recycling.
Well, I don't think that's a good idea for Scranton, we'll have that.
I mean, bigger town, even bigger towns are quitting.
Well, there's, there's a twenty-eight E agreement with every town in Green County except for Scranton and Grand Junction. Just Grand Junction is doing their own too, but that's not working so well either.
Do you know how much it is?
Um, I, I don't know if they do a per capita thing or how they do their charging, I'm not, I'm not for sure. How they're doing it with the town.
Let's find that out and, and work on it next time.
But I think it is good to find out from like.
Make a good decision.
Cuz there's a lot of people upset about it, for sure.
Oh, a hundred percent, yep, yep.
A lot of people.
Yep.
Well, and if he's gonna continue to not do it, then.
Then we should revisit his contract then.
Exactly right, yep, and that's what we're looking into.
We can do that next month.
Cover your butt.
Twenty dollars a month.
But we need to go back and make a motion to table that.
I'll make a motion to table the.
Second it.
Solid waste.
Solid waste thingy.
Dustin?
Yep.
Ashley?
Yep.
Gail? Oh, God, the rain's hard.
Yes, Annette, Annette.
You were a name tag.
You go to my house all the time, Jerry, why can't you remember my name?
I just, just all of a sudden I looked at you, it's like, it's gone.
She's still pretty.
Okay, okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
A motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay.
And we're gonna have another budget meeting?
Yes, I will send an email out.
Do we need to bring our papers?
Don't start with me.
I'm just saying, my, I'm like, I'm taking it still.
We just need to go over everything.
Well, I mean. My sit on my coffee table.
Can you just provide us with new papers so I don't have to remember things, cuz I need you like that.
How many sets do you need, Ashley?
Okay, Ashley.
What?
Yes or no?
Yes, for what?
Frozen.
Yes.
Dustin?
Yep. Annette?
Yes.
Okay.
Packing my bag, yes.